I'll help set up.
Sorry.
You can sit right in the middle.
We're gonna put this over here then, so if you're gonna be talking with me. So, um, are we thinking we can get started? You guys find to get started? Are we waiting on anybody?
No, I don't, I don't believe you.
Okay. Hunter, are we good? I'm gonna get us started here. Can you, can you hear me all right? Okay, perfect. So I don't have to have that right in front of me. Okay, well, I'm gonna call the June 8th meeting of the Mashpee School Committee and the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Council to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's especially meaningful to read our land acknowledgement in the, while we're here in the Government Center. So I just want to again say that the Mashpee Schools, Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who have lived and been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. We have a short agenda for tonight. That is, we've dispensed with kind of the normal school committee business to focus just on talking with the Tribal Council. And everyone should have a copy of that agenda in front of you. So at this point, I would take a motion to ratify or any suggested changes or additions. I'll make a motion to ratify the agenda of June 8th as presented. Okay, a motion by Kathy. And a second by Matt. Any discussion? Alright, so Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don? Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do we have any public comment tonight? I don't think we do. I don't see any. We're missing our recording secretary tonight, so Sherry, I mean, yes, that's right. Hope is doing that for us, but she's just speechless.
Actually, can I have public comment?
Can Carlton have public comment?
Yeah, I just, 'cause I, I didn't, I didn't have an opportunity to attend another school committee meeting from the last time that I attended on the issue, to see that you guys implemented the changes of coaches on the buses. And I wanted to say I appreciated the change and know that coming to the meeting and expressing my concerns, not only with my child, just children in general, attending sporting events, that you guys actually acted on it and implemented changes to know that it meant some. So I appreciate that and coming to the building. I just definitely wanted to let you know that I deeply appreciated that, as did my family. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, next on our agenda, I was gonna ask the superintendent to just talk about the Multi-Year Plan for Success. But before we do that, since we're all at this big table, I would love to just make sure that everyone knows everybody at the table. You have the benefit of seeing our names on the school committee, but, and I recognize members of the Tribal Education Department, but I just wanna make sure all of our members know the Tribal Council and who's represented here. So can we start with you, Cameron?
Yep, my name's Cameron Greendier, and I run the State Tribal Education Partnership Grant for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe.
Thank you.
Wenina Kanakisa. I'm Kitty Hendricks Miller. I am the Indian Education Coordinator for the Education Department and the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Forgive the sunglasses, but I don't have my regular glasses, so.
Oh.
I can't see without them.
Yeah.
And that too.
Weniki Sath, Natasha Suis, Roxanne Mills Brown. I'm the Education Director for the Tribe. And I think I know everybody. Nice to be here, thank you.
I'm Talia Landry. I am the Great Manager of the Education Department for the new Drug Services Group that we just received. I also wear the hat as the Indian Ed Coordinator for the Mashpee Public Schools.
I'm Darius Coons, Mashpee Wampanoag. I'm the Cultural Outreach Coordinator for the Mashpee Education Department. And I know a lot of your folks here.
Hi, Rita Goncelz, Tribal Council and the CEO of the Indian Healthcare Facility in the back, and also a grandmother of children that go to the Mashpee Public Schools.
Carlton Hendricks Jr., Vice Chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, and thank you again and welcome.
Thank you. Nicole Bartlett, School Committee Chair and parent.
Kathy Lewis, Committee Vice Chair and also parent.
Brian Whedon, I'm the Secretary for the School Committee. I'm Patty Davis, School Committee and.
Yeah. Anne Slackman, yeah. Yes, I was just about to say.
We have with us, Karama, she is the Outreach Coordinator for the Mashpee Public Schools. Deb Luardis, Principal of Cool School 382. Behind her are Randy, Jane, Dr. Jamie Carroll, she's our Special Education Director. Mary-Kate O'Brien is the Principal of Quashnet School 366. And Stacy Minnett is our new Mashpee High School Principal, starting to learn from our tribe. I think Josh Tarsky, our interim Principal, is here too. I'm not sure if I'm on the tour.
He's lost. He's still a child.
We just introduced you.
Yeah.
Just say.
We just wanted to show that there are some men that work at the district. Thanks, Josh. Great, okay, so Patty. Hunter's gonna let us know if he can hear you on, on the.
Hi, Hunter.
Okay, great.
Good. Do you want me to talk about the plans?
Yes, please.
So, in the package that you all received and referenced on the agenda is the Mashpee Public Schools Plan for Success, which is our four-year strategic plan. And this past year was really the first year of implementation. And you can see that we have four pillars of success. One is focused around our Portrait of the Graduate. The second one is about diversity, equity, and inclusion. The third pillar is teaching and learning, and the fourth is Mashpee Connected Community. I do wanna say this was a process that was started, we developed this plan pre-COVID, and then we sort of, you know, inched our way through during COVID. Thank you to Roxanne Mills Brown. She served on this group of about 25 stakeholders who helped us develop this plan. And so what we have done, there's a strategic objective under each of the pillars, and then there are strategic initiatives. So this year, we focused on certain elements within the plan. Obviously, you cannot, even though we anxiously would like to accomplish everything in year one, we do recognize it's a process. And also, we had a little bit more interruption this year from COVID than we expected. But most of the staff at our school and the leaders have all, and the school committee as well, merged their goals in alignment with this plan. So we're hoping that, you know, in, at the end of the plan, and we do do benchmark checking as we go through, but we have outcomes listed, and so we're hopeful that this will be a very successful plan that will bring the Mashpee Public Schools to the next level.
So this is effectively our roadmap. And, and everything sort of tears off of this plan. And, and I think we welcome suggestions or ideas for activities within some of these priorities that would allow us to partner with the tribe through our, our leadership framework that we have.
One of the big focuses this year was on the Portrait of the Graduate, making it sort of come alive in the classrooms and making sure that, starting at pre-K, ours is a, is a portrait that is not just specific to high school students. Sometimes those are the kind of portraits that are developed. And so our teachers did a lot of work really making sure of where in the learning students could demonstrate those competencies. But when the portrait was developed, which was the year before the Plan for Success, again, I wanna thank, Roxanne was involved in that as well. And we did bring it back to the council when we last met, I believe that was the last time we met. For also input in terms of sort of wordsmithing and making sure we captured, particularly, there was one in there about sort of community history and making sure we specifically referenced the tribe. So that is really a guiding document as well for getting our kids from, you know, pre-K to 12, so they graduate with what we feel are the competencies they need for success. That's an important document to us as well.
So are there any questions about the Plan for Success or sort of the strategic framework or?
No, I guess I would like to say that we, as an Education Department, will pay close attention to this and try to align some of our initiatives, but also some of our supplemental activities to the pillars and the objectives here.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, I think the Portrait of the Graduate was the last time we met in council chambers. 'Cause we met last year, but virtually, I think. Or did we not meet last year? It was two years ago. Yeah. So that covers the, the Plan for Success. Any council members have any questions or comments? Rita, David, anything?
I'm trying to look through it right now.
Okay. Could we, could we pass the mic to you for a second, just?
I know in the past I have mentioned that, you know, it'd be great to kind of capture it and get the idea. Look at, look at the students, particularly tribal students, and understand their interests and kind of build upon those interests, sort of nurturing their strengths. You know, I know from a tribal perspective, that would be important for us to create additional opportunities and expose folks that are gravitating to particular areas and understanding their way of learning. It might be a way for us to create opportunities to expose youth to different things that the tribes involve. And maybe even the town government, you know, on the select side, town manager side. Create opportunities to expose the youth to different things. So I know one thing that I struggle with is that we expect our students to go into college and hit career paths and things, and they may not have a broad spectrum of what's out there for different disciplines and professions to pursue. So how we can influence their decisions by creating opportunities to expose new ideas, potential career paths, you know, those developing industries for cultural and, and things, green energy, all those different things. So I just wanna ensure that we're doing our best to put them in areas where there are potential jobs that allow them to make sustainable incomes, that allow them to just live here on the game. Thank you.
Yeah, agreed, thanks, David. Rita, are you good? Anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to ask.
No one's gonna be able to hear you, I'm sorry.
I don't think I've read in detail enough, but I was gonna ask if there's any, with everything going on with, oh, thank you, students. We've, we had a lot of suicide initiatives with the tribe, so I'm just wondering in the educational realm if there was, if a, if a child needed to speak to somebody, what, how, how do they go about? I wanted to see how, how it's addressed in the school.
So we really work on sort of the relationship building and making sure that all students have one or two people that they feel most comfortable. It doesn't have to be a counselor as the initial go-to person. But we're also pretty well-resourced when it comes to counseling within our building and also partnering buildings, and also partnerships with some outside providers who come in and support with counseling. So it's really, for me, it starts with that relationship so that a teacher or someone who's involved with a student recognizes when the student appears to be different than they normally are and reaches out to try to get them the supports. We do have some assessments that we do, beginning, middle, we do ADESA, which is a screening that the teachers do that sort of will flag students that might need to be looked at a little more closely because they might be struggling. So it starts with sort of observational pieces, and then there's a more in-depth sort of assessment that takes place. But we do, it really does come down to making sure we notice the kids and we can tell when they're having a good day and a bad day and trying to find out the reasons why. But we do have a lot of supports available for students up at the schools, all three schools, which I'm very thankful for.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm all set. Looks good, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next on the agenda, we had a bit of time for the council to share out. And I think this, this came out of the agenda setting with the leadership team, so is there something specific?
Well, we, we put this on here, so I don't know whether it's an opportunity for the council to share any thoughts.
I would, I would defer to, I had a discussion with Roxanne earlier to just see if there was any concerns or where we can get better. So I would defer to the Education Department, who has a firsthand basis on the students, where can we get better? Are we in a good path? And I would, I would ask, defer to them. If you had any concerns or any areas that we can focus on to get better. I know we, we do lack, what David said, on students on the next level. What do we do now? Not, college isn't for everybody that, as we're seeing, and what, what else is there for these? So I think that's a concern that we all need to work on as a community, not just a tribe, as a community. So, but I would defer to Roxanne if there's any concerns or areas in the department.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, I would say at this point in time, if my staff concurs, there are no issues. We, we meet challenges, and we've recently, for example, we submitted a, a new Native Youth Community Project application, oh, six weeks ago or so, and we came to the table with Falmouth and Mashpee and handed them a partnership agreement. And we hadn't orientated them to what was even in the grant, neither the narrative, the budget, or the purpose. And so that made, I think, what, we had to take a step back and reflect on our involvement with the school district as a system and the fact that oftentimes we found ourselves working in isolation and then going to them, for them to agree with us and meet, meet us there. And so that was a, I think, for me and some of my staff, a huge learning piece. And we have to kind of get out of our own shell and comfort zone and, and broach, I think, the district. We have quarterly partnership meetings, at which time we're, we're, we just all lay it out on the table. It's a great, it's a great process, and it's been going for five years. And so it's very comfortable, and if there's issues, if there's concerns, if we're having problems, then really that's the place to discuss it unless it's an immediate or urgent need to have a response. As far as the college and career pieces are, we do, we do quite a bit with, with, with college visits. Helping with the financial aid applications, supporting college application completion, going on tours, college visits. COVID interrupted that quite a bit. We support independent family college visits, once a student has been accepted to one or two schools. I think where we lack, where we're a little bit deficient, and we work as closely with employment and training as we can for 18 and older, is the technical careers. But certainly, that's an area where we may be able to work with contractors and consultants. And, but there again, we're working on the outside of the school district. They have quite extensive career and technical field opportunities. And, and in the health services in the district, hospitality. And so we need to be more, I guess, forward and, and get in there, maybe observe classes, understand exactly what our kids are able to do in the school. Then we can support better kind of guidance and supports for their interests. So we, we understand, I think, to a certain degree, we always welcome suggestions. Does anybody else wanna?
Yeah, I think just to play off of Ms. Roxanne's point, with being able to understand what each other is doing, I think that also has to do with us being able to be accessible to the faculty more. And I know we've been advocating for those professional development days, but we really need to be able to get a hold on some of you guys' professional development days throughout the calendar year, so we can access those or be accessible to those teachers and they know. And we can, you know, put forward the professional development that we provide under the STEP grant, which is really important for our students to be able to be understood, so they can try to be more successful within the American public school system, which we know, as, or you guys have learned about throughout some of our professional development sessions, can be detrimental to our students. So we wanna make sure we're giving our teachers, the educators of our native students, that proper education and history and even resources as well, and knowing what we can offer that could supplement what they offer. 'Cause like, just to Ms. Roxanne's point, as far as the career and readiness, really getting involved with that department and being able to offer our resources and what we can do, and maybe what we know our students are interested in as far as a career field, 'cause maybe that's not coming to that, you know, the school to career teacher, maybe that's not coming to their head, oh, this tribal member might be interested in working on a shellfish farm. Stuff like that, that, you know, if we had that connection, we would be able to be more accessible and we would be able to reach our students more, so they could actually have a more enriching experience during high school. So that's one part, at least I wanted to say. And another, I know we're working on with Darius getting into the Quashnet School, but also having that safe space in each of the schools, I think is important. I think the change of the schedules will make it so that the high school will have that safe space again or that dedicated space for the native students. But just incorporating that, and so we're conscious of that. 'Cause I know we've had some difficulties throughout the year trying to coordinate, like, some of the things that we have brought to the table for like our high school students, whether it be a college, or we would bring advisors down to meet, and we would have a hard time just coordinating it because we didn't have that actual space. But just even having that for the students and having someone, whether it be a mentor, the Indian Ed Coordinator, or the people that the Education Department can provide, like Darius, having that when the need is identified. And luckily, we've been able to do that, at least within the Quashnet School, within the circumstance for this year, but be able to push that forward and continue that relationship building. Because what we have noticed within, you know, throughout me going to school, throughout all the generations and stuff, is that we, we're unique individuals and we're important to this community. And the Education Department really is advocating to be able to have that forefront and that safe for our students and get them comfortable with us to be advocating for them as well. So we have, working together and being able to communicate more and having access to the faculty would be important, I think. We can see within this partnership.
I just wanna express gratitude to Roxanne and her team because you are a wealth of information, and we're so appreciative for all the grant writing and the grants that you do, team, to really help not only the Mashpee Native students, but also most of the ones on the case as well. We talked to the partnership this year of developing sort of a resource guide of what is available and offered from the Tribal Education Department, so that's a work in progress that we're getting to. We also talked at the beginning of last year, and it's ongoing, but we want, we likewise share the desire to have our staff receive the PD that you do provide. I'm very happy that we're doing a half-day workshop for all of our new employees in August, and there'll be some piece of complication as well. The hard part is the competing elements for that PD time, but we can probably do a better job this year. We do have a lot already scheduled. We're working with Dr. Felice Warnham with the staff, but we can definitely integrate as well. And then I think referencing the middle high school space, you know, we were fortunate enough to offer the Wampanac course, so that would have probably taken a block, and then the grade seven exploratory took a block, and then there would be the homeroom, which is only for Native students as well. So if you were coming in, I know we use the auditorium a lot of times for Cameron coming in and John Hanlon, so we can always, you know, work to accommodate that as well. But just the bottom line is that you do a great job securing funds that, and they're all great ideas, it's just finding all the time to fit it into sort of the mosaic of things that are going on at the school. But thank you for the Education Department and the tribe for all that you do.
And there's nothing that precludes, I mean, I was just keying off of what Talia said about access to teachers. I mean, we don't restrict access to our teachers.
Yeah, like, I mean, Megan Mottola works closely with the tribe with the courses she offers. We can do a better job. I know a few years back, when we had the 10-week course that Natana did, and it was Jen. We, that, we had a couple of years, we had, you know, whole groups of like 20 teachers who took that 10-week course. Every Thursday, they would go after school. So we can definitely sort of put together some options for teachers. They're very thirsty for an understanding and, you know, making it better in the classrooms for all the Native students. I know that last, the last night we met on was really trying to pull the data, not just on Native students, but for all students, in terms of what type of learner they were. And having that information might be empowering to teachers to alter or tweak a lesson a little bit. And so that kind of work is, you know, something we're all interested, is just getting the logistics into the mix.
So I think one other thing we might add is, when Rita asks about what a student does when they need to speak with somebody, we have a great relationship with the Mashpee School District, and we recently, we've had this elders panel that was organized in response to issues that families might have, in particular, with attendance at the public school or, or maybe behavioral issues, whatever the case. And we did have a case come before the elders panel about a month and a, about two months ago. And the elders panel is made up of mainly women, we have one male, they're, they're part of the elders judiciary officially. And we met with these students, we, it's, it's not disciplinary, it's not punishment of any sort. It's, it's grandparents coming together to speak with the kids and to listen to the kids and to have the kids talk with one another. And it seemed to have worked really well the first time. We had to get parent permission, Darius transported. We ended up with a follow-up meeting about 30 days later, or two weeks later, and brought the, the students back in. And it seemed from, from their responses that things were much better. And we got confirmation from the principal that indeed, to this point, and if there's wood around, that things had changed for the better to this point. So we also have a truancy agreement that's been in the works for several years now, and we have the Suffolk Law students from the Indigenous Peoples Clinic assisting us in the development of that. Again, we started that in isolation, we met with the district leadership team at. Again, we started that in isolation, we met with the district leadership team at a certain point, when Vivian Bussier was the court administrator. And then, we took it back and worked in further isolation. Finally, we, we submitted some information to, to Patty, and she, with her attorneys, gave it back to us. And so, I think this next time, because it has to be part of our juvenile ordinance, which the council ultimately has to review and approve, it has to be a little bit more of a team effort, because right now, we were passing things back and forth. So, that's another example of us doing something and thinking that we can just have the district, you know, put their stamp on it. Positive stuff, lots of positive stuff and lots of work.
Anyone, anyone from the committee want to say anything?
I think it's important that the tribe have the resources that they need. I think that sometimes, whenever we get in situations, sometimes there's the, you know, token Indian, so to speak. Sometimes I think that a lot of times, it's always been a dancing show for people sometimes, like, you know, sometimes we'll get our kids to come in and do these performances and showcase their culture, and we see that, you know, it's doing something. But then sometimes, there might be other things that we need to really work towards instead of just, you know, showcasing the good things that we have, because I think that sometimes, there are certain things that the tribe might have, or the school might have, that are kind of like issues that we kind of, you know, dance around. You know, we know, we talked about school choice before, and we can't obviously make preference for school choice, but some of the kids that do leave the district because they can't afford to live here, has been a problem, and the school committee has been approving waivers and stuff. But I think that the tribe should look at an agreement with the schools, to see what kind of funding we could provide to the schools to help with staffing, so on and so forth, to possibly work towards a goal to make sure that our Wampanoag students stay within the district. I think that it's also because of our partnerships and relationships that we received the Magna Award, because of all the things that we're doing here in the community. And I think that sometimes, it's about who you talk to, because I think that, on the public school side, I think that sometimes, it's just the lack of education sometimes. You know, if you have a Native American in the hallway, you might have some of your staff that's going to sit there and ask them 5,001 questions, just because that's the only Native American that they're interacting with. And it kind of needs to be more formal on, you know, having the resources, like we talked about, to have Darius kind of as a key person or somebody. And the tribe just tries to do that to make sure that we're sending out accurate information. Some people can sit there and, you know, can go on a whim and, you know, make up things as they go. And I think the tribe does a good job at identifying who the cultural keepers are, you know, and so on and so forth. So, I think just as long as we continue to collaborate together and work towards some substantial changes, I feel like we're definitely heading in the right direction. But I don't want the tribe or the education staff to kind of be given the burden of, you know, you guys are the go-to, and we're going to ask you 5,001 questions, just because Kitty's coming in and doing a presentation. I know Cameron's pretty good at doing the presentations at the other schools and is, you know, very educational and informative about the various dances and so on and so forth. So, I think just being mindful of that on our side to help support the tribe is important.
I'm sorry, just to bring it back to Brian's point and what I was saying earlier, as far as, especially with the PDPs, that's why I, I know I'm talking for STEP right now, but that's why I keep pushing those, because I know, since we got the STEP grant, we've been asking to get on the official PDP schedule, so it can be offered to the faculty for, you know, those days that they get offered those PDPs. And we still haven't been able to access those days, and it's so important for us to be able to be, have that space to teach the teachers, because like Brian said, if they're not exposed to, you guys get it all the time, you know, we meet all the time, but you're not necessarily in the classroom with the students. And so, if they're not receiving that education, whether it be history on trauma, or identifying certain issues that we do face and characteristics of that, and just anything that they can get from our professional development, it might help save that student. And that's how critical we are, we're losing our, our kids. So, that's why I keep pushing this, because it's, we need to be there and we need to educate them, and, because it's, you don't know what you don't know. And we're here to offer that, and we, we do put out so much, but we do need, we need that in return as far as that, that bit, I know you're saying it needs to be cohesive with what you're doing, but this is, this is our critical point, you know, and this is, it has to be cohesive for what you're doing, because it's what's happening, and it's our community, and it's your community, it's your children as well. So, that's why I just keep pushing that, and if we can get within that PDP schedule, whether it be for guidance counselors or faculty, or whatever the case may be, and it should be on a yearly basis, that we're getting that sort of, that date, or just you remember that we have that, because each year, it seems like we're having this conversation of, you guys are planning out to the next year, and we're still not getting on that schedule.
So, Talia, I just want to respond to that, only because since you've come on board, we have not been able to do that, and you've gotten awards since COVID. We've done a ton of it prior to you, prior to COVID, and will continue to. So, I want to make sure it's just clear that this is not something we have not been doing. We've been doing it a lot, and most of our teachers have gone through professional development with folks from the Education Department, just not with you personally, or maybe not with Darius personally. And it is our every intention to continue to offer those options, but we have mandated requirements for professional development from the state that we absolutely cannot, we're not allowed to skip. And those days are required. So, I just want to make sure it's not us choosing not, and we, our eyes speak for me, I keep, I, the level of need that are, all our children are at, particularly socially and emotionally, when we talk about suicide prevention and training our staff, there is nothing I see that's more important than that. So, I just want to make sure that that piece is clear, that we completely understand that. We have not had the opportunity with COVID to bring anybody in, and I would like to offer, you're not going to get the whole district at once, and it's not going to be the best use of how you can get them. You sitting in an auditorium with every staff member from Mashpee is not going to move the needle on our teachers. What's going to move the needle are the smaller classes, where you can really engage with people and send the message of what is, they need to know. And that, I think our partnership can map out a schedule of how that can work. So, I guess I just, logistical perspective, wanted to throw that out as an option, that perhaps that's our next step, is not those old days, it's not going to be as useful as really getting in there with the people on a smaller scale and doing it a lot, which again, takes a lot of resources, which is really hard. So, and I sound more mad, more frustrated, and I'm not any of those things, I'm like super excited to be here, so I just want to put that out there to my voice, it's not good.
I'm going to add too, that we can, I mean, we don't meet again as our partnership until October, but we can meet during the summer, see what is available. We have our folks for half-days are planned with Dr. Felice Warneham, but she's working in small groups, so that means there are other small groups in other buildings of our, so we could set up a 10-week, we could model her schedule, except have a module that's for the tribal education, and you're working with the same group of teachers for 10 weeks, and then you switch to the next, you know, group of teachers. So, I think we can weave that in for next year, but I think we'd have to meet this summer to make sure it's in place by the time we have the rest of days.
Yeah, and just to both of your point, I'm not angry as well. More, and I, that's why I did reference, you know, since the STEP grant, and I'm sure the STEP grant started, you know, when COVID started, and I just know we've been pushing for at least, I'm not trying to, obviously, we want to reach all the faculty, but that guidance counselor training that we were really trying to push and that professional development, we really, that's what was one of our focuses that we weren't able to get done, so it would be helpful if we can try and get that at least done, because start, starting, you know, with small groups, guidance counselors is kind of one of the groups that we should be targeting, because obviously, that's where they go to, and especially along with the emotional and social characteristics of it, as well as the college and career readiness, you know, makes it coincide.
Can I just make one more point on this vein? I think that's why, can you all hear me, it's on, okay? I think that's why getting that kind of resource guide is kind of critical also, because while you're in the process of setting these sessions up and peppering them throughout the year, because I think that's, you know, to Hope's point, I think that constant presence and that, that repeated, you know, yes, it's going to take resources and time, but I think it'll be more effective if it is peppered throughout the year like that. But I think in addition to that, there's so much out there on both sides. I think that if there is a, you know, a, a pretty comprehensive guide that says, this is everything that the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe offers, this is what the school is currently doing, you know, like, I sat in on senior seminar, like, I, I sat in on a lot of the senior seminars, and to your point about the college and career readiness, the internships that some of the Wampanoag students that I sat in, some of them started off with, I had no clue what I wanted to do, so then I did this internship, and now I either have, I understand this path, or I discovered that I liked this path better. As, you know, as a, as a parent, as a school committee member, as a volunteer in town, it was kind of exciting to hear that they saw other opportunities. And whether or not that's something that you were aware that they had, you know what I mean, like, I feel like on both sides, we both need to know very comprehensively what is offered, what is provided, because I think that the teachers, if they see that you have someone in the tribe who's a specialist on, what, you know, pick something, they might not have known that that was somebody that they had as a resource that could come into the classroom, or that they could even reach out to on their own time and strike up that conversation, you know what I mean? Like, I think a lot of it is that disconnect that we were talking about of not necessarily knowing what's out there and available, and I think that's why, yes, those PD days, I think are crucial, I agree with you, and I think, you know, they're working, like Hope said, you know, within what they have available. But I think also, having that resource of everybody knowing what's out there on both sides, you know, so that we can both look and say, oh, okay, there is someone at the school who does this, oh, okay, there is someone at the tribe who's an expert on this. And then, creating those bonds individually as well, because then we're making those connections in the community, and it's building those bridges kind of more organically in a sense, and then spreading it in those smaller groups that tend to be more effective. I guess that's, that's all I wanted to add, because I do, I really think that that, that comprehensive guide of both sides of the table is going to be a very big piece to our puzzle. And that's what I love about the partnership, is that we are working on that, because I think it's, it's going to be a very helpful thing for everybody.
Darius, did you want to say anything?
There's a small example, like, related to Indian college careers, that we're, we weren't able to get underway this year because of COVID, but it's going to be up and running, making sure that the Health Services Department here in the tribe is represented on the board that oversees that program, and the potential for internships for kids going through that program here would be great. And obviously, what David said, making sure our kids are exposed to all of the opportunities for jobs on the Cape. I was able to go a few years back to Teladine in North Island, I did not even know that manufacturing facility existed, and that so many engineers were employed there, and so it's, there's a lot of pockets of work on the Cape, and career opportunities that we do need to expose our kids to, and everything related to the rural economy is something that, and definitely the wind farm, and all of those things, we need to do a better job of exposure, because once you get a little, like, introduction to it, sometimes it just takes you about half, so I think we can do a better job of that too.
Check. So, I'm coming to say that everything's, that we're talking about is, you know, pretty positive, and I like it that we're talking about bringing everything, kind of putting it on the table. As far as this partnership goes, in our services, I really feel like it should be a meeting a head-on type of partnership, you know, we're going 50 and 50. When I think about the jobs that John and I do, the shows that we've done, the educational pieces, the PDPs, the conferences, the different things that we're providing, I don't know sometimes if we're getting the full met of 50/50 from Mashpee Public Schools. Like you just said, Ms. Kathy Lewis said, they don't know our services, like, none of the teachers know, and it's kind of redundant that we have to repeat ourselves every time of what we offer, because I kind of did that with the NYPD grant when I was running that grant. So, it would be nice that you guys could meet with us, maybe, as school committee at our partnership meetings, to discuss those services, maybe write them down in official document for all of your teachers, maybe at the beginning of orientation or at the beginning of your school year. Again, because that partnership, you know, we're not getting meet, I don't think we're meeting half, like, 50/50. We still have students that are having troubles, not getting a hold of us. Teachers are having troubles with those students, those tribal students, and nobody calling us. You know, we have those services, we have the backgrounds to deal with some of our students like that. And we do all these other college visits and whatnot, and, you know, we appreciate you guys letting them out of school if we have to do that sort of thing. But again, I think we could all stand, I mean, we could all try to meet 50/50 in the, the effort, and you guys kind of meeting us with, you know, how's this student doing in school, can you let us know, or something like that, and so we can help out the certain students that need this help, because we don't hear about it. You know, we'll hear from their parents later on and be like, how come my parent, my kid is having troubles in this area, in this area, in this area? And we're like, I don't know, and we call, and we can't get that sort of data from anybody.
Yeah, so just, we've worked on this, and Roxanne's aware of this as well, we, we have to have permission from a family to speak to anyone in the tribe, and we have a mechanism in place for that, it's an annual process, and I know that the, I think, Darius who were actively involved with helping getting some of those in, because we send them, you know, we have, I think, 158 native students from Mashpee Public Schools identified through our system. We send them a letter, we send them the form, we send them a return envelope stamped, and they just have to fill it out, and they check off, you know, what things they'd like to share, because without that, we'd get in trouble if we share. We are super happy, and we want tribal support and, and support for the family in particular, but it is a, it is, there's a fine line there that we can't cross, but we want, so whatever we do together collectively to message that and get those forms back in, would make life so much easier, because in past years, what we would do is set up Roxanne in Power School, where we assigned to class, based on every student who returned that form, and then she had full access to know what was going on. And so, and sometimes we do make a call to a family, but that's where it becomes a little bit, we need the form in place to make it really as smooth as it could be, because you are a resource, but we do want that, but that's why it sometimes doesn't feel as smooth as it should.
Gotcha. Thank you, Patty, for that clarification. I mean, I know we talked about this before, so I just wanted to bring it up again, I'm sorry, but the 50/50 part, again, just trying to meet us halfway, you know, because I feel like the effort is all done by, you know, John, me, even the performances, like, it's all funded by us, you know, and when we do those, I would like a little more assistance with that, you know, to get some of our community members involved, you know, and again, it's just not performances, it's also education piece. As you guys hear me, when we talk, it's all education, you know, we're giving you a full education, who we are as a people, and we're trying to celebrate that. And it's also for our students, to give them that better self-esteem of who they are, you know, it helps them in school a little bit. And, so I'm getting a little off-key there, but anyway, I would just like a little more assistance, like Ms. Kathy Lewis said again, like, the faculty doesn't even know what we do, you know, they see me probably walking around the school, but they're probably not sure what I can cover or what I can do with my grant and the Education Department. But I feel like, if you want us to come in and talk to you faculty and let us, like, give them some of that PD part of, a quick five minutes of what we can offer to our students, I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Obviously, that piece, but part of what we talked about, we didn't get it done this year, is that sort of resource, like, I would like to look, open something, and there's your pictures, or it gives your background, says, reach out to Cameron if you're looking for this, or reach out to Talia, or reach out to Darius, so that personal piece, and absolutely come in and have that personal piece as well. And we are more than willing to support different activities. I never knew you were looking for additional funding for any of the things that you did in Hopper, so if we knew, we would problem solve around that, so absolutely make sure you reach out to us.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Hi. Now, you said you have 158 native students, or are they Wampanoag students?
Uh, native.
Native. So, with your Indian Education Grant, I'm thinking ways that we, that that grant can support, because I, my district, it does not include Mashpee, so we, you know, I can't really be involved in Mashpee Public Schools, and I have a lot of times, I have parents that ask me, you know, can I get some deer? of times, I have parents that ask me, you know, can I get some deer skin for my child? And I'm like, or help, help in certain ways, and I can't do that because of my grant. So I was just wondering if there's a way with the count that you have, 158, that you should have a lot of funds to, to help, you know, academically plus culturally support families.
Yes, so, you know, I would have to say probably because of COVID, the cultural side seems to not, like, kids weren't staying after school. But the bulk of our grant is for school day tutoring for students that are identified as below grade level. And we have that in place at the Coombe School, the Quashnet School, and the Mashpee Middle High School. There is additional money in the grant, and it's a little bit higher this year, actually, that does allow. I mean, we purchase supplies all the time. When Carla was the, Carla Radler was the coordinator, you know, ordering the materials, the deer skins, and having someone coming in to help them make drums or the beadwork and the different cultural pieces, that tended to be after school. And hopefully that will sort of, you know, regenerate itself. This year, it can be done at other times as well, but our grant does support the cultural pieces.
Yeah, and I know now that you have Talia, too. She has a little, like a broader, broader cultural background.
Well, yes, just one or things that I think is coming across in between with everything within itself. As you know, I've been trying to kind of delve in, delve into that budget because I do think that it's, all of the money goes to the tutors. So not, not much money goes to any cultural piece to it. It doesn't even go to cultural people to teach. And not even a lot of it goes to the coordinator to be able to coordinate cultural things and stuff like that. So I do think that is something that, you know, the partnership can look at, especially with the new grants as far as funding tutors in there. Because I know that my grant and different grants have the funding for that. So if we, when we can sit at the table again more personally, I think we will be able, whether it be in this next agreement that we have, because I know we have another agreement that we're coming up with for this, the grant that I'm managing now, we can probably involve some more tutoring so we could get some money out of that tutoring cost, you know, the cost of that in-house tutoring and move it to more cultural stuff because they are missing that. I know I expressed that to you, Patty, on a one-on-one conversation, you know? Growing up in Mashpee and having different people within that Indian Ed grant, we did exercise, you know, cultural classes and we were able to do things. Our students aren't getting that. They're not being exposed to that. We offer things outside of school, but if we're not meeting them where, where they're at, it's hard to reach them sometimes because, you know, our kids are very involved and they get caught up with things or they have stuff going on within their family. Sometimes school is the only way to really get to them because that's where they have to be all the time. So if we can try and work that out, like I said, we could probably be more personable about the partnership agreement, the next one, of how we can maybe financially cover within the need. But as we talked about as well, the tutoring, all of the money goes to tutoring and not all of the native students are able to access that. Because if you're an A-plus student, you're not getting, you're not accessing the Indian Ed grant funds at all because you don't need, you don't have the need. So that little bit of money for supplies and the extra contractual stuff isn't enough to, I think, suffice what we need as far as a cultural presence within the school system because it is Mashpee, you know? And I know you guys try and do a good job with involving us and representing us and really celebrating the Wampanoag tribe, but really, you know, getting in there within the personal side of it and making sure we're meeting them at their level and really being there within their classroom settings with either different people or their peers and teaching them how to make a medicine bag or, you know, things like that, bead and things that will keep them kind of grounded and maybe in touch to bring that back to, you know, the school and make them more comfortable and really see a more success. Because right now, we're using the funds to push a system that obviously they're not excelling in already. So we're, we're, we're kind of being contradictory, you know? We're not giving them their exact needs, might not be. Maybe tutoring does help with some and it, obviously, it has to with academically, but we have to have that, the extra supplemental support because we are facing these different challenges of, you know, living one, one foot in a moccasin and one foot in a shoe, so.
Yeah, I think that's really important together, you can develop. So where does it look like for the cultural piece that you're talking about? And what tutoring provides we can match the two together?
Yeah, I will just have to figure out.
I think Rita had something to add.
I don't want to, it's a little different topic, so I don't want to interrupt.
On the lighter note, guys, I'm going to break up Roxanne's deal with the Peacemakers. As she mentioned, those two students who had a conflict with each other in Quashnet School, right? These two students were first cousins, closely related, right? And I, I didn't just come, go down there, pick them up to bring them to tribal court with Roxanne and the elders. I'm driving there to Quashnet, I'm thinking, if these two had conflict, and I'm the only one in the van, how are they going to act with each other in the van? Are they going to put their hands on each other, are they going to start arguing? I wasn't sure. So when I picked those two up, mind you, they're first cousins, right? I, I knew since right from the get-go how they were handling themselves, the behavior. They got along pretty well. So when I got to the tribal court with Roxanne and the elders, I got in there first, I got Roxanne there, in a good mood, the laughing and joking, so it set the tone off right there, right off the bat. And what, that's the first incident we had with the Peacemakers, the first case we had, worked, worked out really well. And we did follow-up cases two weeks later, you know, reflection, so it worked out well. So keep that going. So if you see conflict amongst students, let us know. You guys will be having a speakers bureau very soon for your grasp. So speakers, culture, to science, what's going on today, whatever you need, we have speakers set up and you should, you'll be getting that really shortly. One thing I've been working with is Quashnet School with Alicia Franklin. In this late September, we plan on doing professional development and we want all the, as many administrators and as many counselors and educators there for this one-day event. So it'll be in late September. It's going to be kind of like a reenactment of 18th century. It follows along the fifth grade curriculum and also the third grade curriculum. Development, Alicia, our whole questionnaire, gauge to the question, questions we're going to get, so. So we've got things going in a positive way, but keep open communication. Anything you're not sure, please send over, email us, any one of us, and we can get back to you soon.
Thank you. I'm excited to be listening to all this and so happy that you've invited the Education Department to be part of this planning. I'm just trying to, I'm thinking how the IHS or the healthcare system could fit in. Couple of things that came to mind, cultural and students with risk factors. I don't know where vaping is in the school system, but tobacco cessation and how tribal members, you know, tobacco's more cultural to us and, and how do you tell a tribal member not to smoke? You know what I mean? That type of thing could be a collaborative teaching tool. We're seeing a lot of smoking and, and vaping and issues that are surrounding it. That would be one thing that I'm, I'm thinking. I, I can't promise those, you know, I don't want to say a promise. I have to really put my thinking cap on with the council and the educational team. QPR training, we have educators train the trainers. QPR is question, persuade and refer. It's a tool like CPR that we can teach anybody to deal with a suicide issue right on the spot. It, it's not for, it's for non-professionals. Anybody can learn it and it's an addition, it's, like I said, CPR. So even though you're not a nurse or whatever, you can do CPR. It's a training, QPR that, something, that's something that we can do. We have trainers. Mental health first aid, it's, it's more, you might have done that already. So it has to be redone, you know, keeping the certifications and things like that. So I'm just, I, I'm just glad I'm here and sort of listening. I don't know what I can do right now, but I can, I'm thinking, just want to let, no, I'm not sitting here, I'm thinking of ideas.
Dr. Curley over there in your wave. Dr. Curley and I are both mental health first aid trainers.
Oh, good.
So we want to offer free for free to train anyone. If you want us to put together a training for the, for the community, to appear, whatever you want. So just keep that in mind as well. We may have your own trainers, but if you do need it, we are happy to do it.
Okay.
And I would like to say, Rita, that you are contributing because we, we had a discussion recently with a couple of your staff at Indian Health Services and they will be working with small groups of students in need or students that are at risk as well as working out the details to work with individual students. And we so much appreciate that. And I will formulate the email in the morning and introduce the Quashnet staff to your staff so that we can begin planning and scheduling. So thank you.
I had a question on the plan. How do we measure the success? And, you know, I can see where it says from there that you may have realigned specific initiatives or fellows within the goal of success. So I'm wondering, how do we, over the term of our partnership, how are we assessing the success in terms of interacting, evaluating? Are we having our students that are successful in getting to college? Do we have a higher graduation rate? How are we kind of looking at it from an analytical perspective to see if we're doing the job, what we have to fix, what's not working, those kind of things? Because, you know, at the end of the day, we'd love to see more of our tribal kids making it to college to support tribal shoals and capacity needs and things of that nature. So, you know, I was just wondering that. And the other question I had was, you know, are we fully utilizing the resources, not just within the tribe, but within the town as well? The town archives is a great resource. You know, Richard DeSauwa, he loves to reach out, he's amazing. You know, so things like that, there's different, I think, opportunities there for, you know, maybe for kids working with Indian Ed to where they visit the archives, maybe with analytical projects based on, you know, civil service and what that's like throughout national history, looking at town reports and things like that, you know, various collections that are in there that kind of show different aspects of the town. The other areas, you know, I heard the poor economy mentioned. And, you know, poor economy is great, but if our local quality is terrible, how does that affect our ability to participate in the poor economy? So getting our youth into the environmental needs and concerns within the town, are we working with Natural Resources Department, both on the tribal side and the town side, you know, looking at different programs within the respective governmental structures? And getting the youth involved and interested in some of those tasks that maybe they could align their education with or, you know, I think, because we're looking over some of that stuff over the years, you see the same names of people in some of the older books, you see the same people sitting on like three, four different committees and boards and everything else. And, you know, I think that's been consistent throughout the history of the town. And not just in this area, but other areas as well. You know, even looking at the demographics of the boards and committees and commissioners today, you know, you see more elderly people, people later in life, you don't see a broad representation from the youth or even middle-aged folks throughout the town government. And so, you know, how do we change that? How do we get, are we getting the middle-aged people more involved or are they participating in the civil service and the function in the town?
Snap that, that's what came up.
We couldn't hear you, anyway.
Alicia, you break her computer. I just want to add to what David said is I do feel like the third, you know, leg of the stool that is sort of a little bit missing is the town of Mashpee. And I know getting our students involved, they don't really understand current Mashpee sort of government, they don't understand the past. When Evan Laird came to the school to incorporate student voice in the local comprehensive plan that they're working on, he thoroughly enjoyed it. We put together, we pulled together a group of middle high school students and there were native students involved as well. But his perspect, you know, he had done so much work with people that sort of felt a certain way and it was a breath of fresh air to get the perspective of the youth. So we have to do a better job of getting our kids out and involved, even understand what does the DNR person do? What does the town manager do? What are ways that we can sort of increase their voice, which is part of our Plan for Success, the student voice? So there's a lot of opportunities there that we have yet to tap into, but that would be a great goal, sort of, I would like to build that, too.
And I'm going to ask you to respond to another part of David's question, but in terms of how we measure success. So I, I, when we first started this, we started the district-wide survey and there are a couple of questions in there that allow us to have a metric year over year about how people are feeling about how the district's doing on, you know, some of the things related to this initiative. And under Patty's leadership, for the first time last year, we implemented a student survey to really ask them some of the same questions. So it's not, you know, those responses are anonymous, you know? We're not surveying the same people year over year necessarily, but it does give us a good indicator of how we're doing that we can track over time. And so we have some of those measures for the whole five years of the partnership. And now we have the student survey that is going to be continued, that, that we can add questions to and sort of, you know, work with you, for example, to, to design, you know, to add a question that we might change or, or put in in a particular year. And then I think, to your other point, this is very well-aligned with the Plan for Success and the Portrait of a Graduate and some of the other things. So I just wanted you to talk about sort of how you track progress.
Progression?
Yeah, well, on our, on the plan, the strategic plan and kind of student outcomes, like David talked about, because the committee's not involved in that.
So we are, you know, this is the first year and we have collected sort of data in terms of the action steps that we put in place this year. And part of, you know, occupying a lot of the PD time was that Portrait of a Graduate work, where teachers as teams spent a lot of half-days identifying where those competencies were being taught and where students were able to demonstrate mastery of those or working towards mastery. I also think about, though, what David was saying, like, measuring the success of the partnership, being, you know, now we're in year five and we do list our accomplishments, but maybe we need to go back in October with something more specific of a measurable goal at this point. Because, you know, we're all going to move on and people will come behind us and we want something that is sustained and part of our culture, of our district in this partnership. You know, we do great things every year, we're making, we're definitely so far, much further along than we were in year one, but where will we be in five years? So I think that goal-setting with specific measurable objectives for the partnership would be a good move for the team. And our partnership, I feel the meetings, which were quarterly, were more robust prior to COVID, I would say. And then, so they've, you know, they've lived long during COVID. And so we do have a goal of sort of reinvigorating from the school side in terms of involvement of not just, you know, the principals. When we first started, it was a broad, broader group of teachers and department heads. It was just a richer conversation and so we want to get back to that and make sure that the student voice is in there. We had a couple of students come to one or two, but then it's making sure, are we taking away any barriers for students to participate because they're still going to do their sports and, you know, 415 to 515, is that glitchy for them? So there's other ways to work around that, but really, for me, it's getting back to sort of a broader voice sitting at the table when we're really doing the work that happens at those meetings. So that is definitely a goal that we want.
I don't know, you and Roxanne keep alluding to like, that you're going somewhere, so I just want to, I just want to say, we, I, I think the council and the committee will say, no, thank you. Yeah.
Say what?
You guys aren't going anywhere, so just stop hinting about that. Yeah, I think we've, we've sort of hit on the remaining items that we had on the agenda throughout this conversation, so I haven't wanted to disrupt the, the flow to, to mark some of those things. I do, I do want to say that, I, I don't know how to say this, it, it's like Patty said, you know, we list these accomplishments. I realize that from the tribal perspective, that might in some ways feel like not even near enough to what we need to be doing. And, and I wholeheartedly agree. I think for us, it's also a tool to communicate to people not involved in this conversation, that there are things happening that they might see and take an interest in or appreciate. You know, COVID had really sucked a lot of, air out of a lot of things that we were doing and I really missed having the basketball games in this very room. Those are great events that really brought together our school community and the tribal community in, I thought, a really powerful way. community in, I thought, a really powerful way. So I, and I also know that, you know, reading a land acknowledgement is not, it's not work for me. I did think it was a testament to the work of the people in this room that our class president this year read a land acknowledgement at the beginning of her speech. And to my knowledge, that was the first time that's ever happened in Mashpee. And she was not, she's not a native student, but she learned from your example, the collective example of the people in this room. And I feel like things like that are things you can't measure, but that I notice and that I hope other people in the community notice as well. So I'm, I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish, but I feel like now we're getting to the good stuff, you know, the really hard things, the truancy agreement, the training of the counselors, you know, coordinating on professional development. And your reach is growing. The demands on your time are, is growing and so is your staff. So sort of, this is like the biggest compliment of education staff you've had in my time on the committee. So I feel like all the things are aligning to kind of make this more, more robust and impactful. And Patty also mentioned to me, it hasn't come up tonight, but for the benefit of the tribal council, I know that you also talked about in those leadership meetings, connecting with Falmouth schools as well and sort of doing some of this work together. You know, anytime we, I personally love connecting with other districts because we always learn something and they often learn things from us too. So I feel like anything we can do to make this kind of more efficient, more impactful, sign me up, let me know what you need. I'm totally on board. And I want to allow the other committee members who maybe haven't had a chance to talk. Matt, did you want to, not to put you on the spot, you can think about it. But I'm thinking we can start to kind of wrap this up if, and I just wanted to give anyone an opportunity to sort of do what I just did, which was summarize. So it looks like Cameron and then Don, did you, did I see you lean in? Okay.
Check. Thank you guys for this and yeah, I look forward to, to more dialogue and, you know, improvements amongst each other as a group. So thank you again for all the times you've given me, all the scheduling, all that stuff that you've given us for the community, for the students to be involved, for certain performances and educational pieces. I appreciate it. I really do and I hope I'm doing right by most of the community and students and I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. So on another note, we, John and I are planning a, the Step Grant is planning another PDP conference for the summer. August 23rd is the tentative scheduled date right now. I, I hope that's going to stay. I'll find out hopefully tomorrow. It's for the all educators and it's on basically a forced assimilation and also educational history for native students. So it goes into the, we're actually having the National Board, National Boarding School Healing Commission, going to be on that professional development piece. They're going to have half of that. Then also Missy Lesser from Dawnland, I don't know if anybody's heard of that video before or that movie, she's going to be there too. And it directly talks and affects all of our native children. So it's really an educational piece for all educators. I think that everyone should really go to that. So again, it's a tentative schedule. We'll get a flyer out to you guys too. Thank you very much for your time. Oh, and Kitty has another announcement.
Well, it's, it's sponsored through the Step Grant. It's a STEM, first light STEM workshop at the Waukai Bay Estuary Research and Reserve. And we have about five slots left and it's a three-day conference, June 28th, 29th and 30th. And it will be held at Waukai Bay Research Reserve and also here at the tribe with a tour of Mashpee and a clamboil on the last day.
Great. While you're passing the mic, I'm going to let Kathy or Don.
So from my, my perspective, I've heard some good things here. You know, one of the things that I just want to reemphasize, what we don't know, we don't know. And to have that communication, open communication, PD is important. We're limited contractually to the amount that we can provide, but things can always be changed. And so if there's sufficient need and sufficient will, maybe we can accomplish some areas in that aspect. No, everyone is always looking for money. We do have a very detailed budget. I think our budgeting process under, actually is phenomenal. It's scaled forward in a very good process. The hand and the mask. We've tried to accomplish there what every teacher needs. And so knowing if there's other things that need to be funded that we can consider, that would be important, I think, for us as we go through the legislature process. I think we've done a lot of things. To your point, we're doing things. We need to get down below that to the cultural level to really understand. So I really understand what's going on inside versus looking at this big person next to me. I don't, I don't have that perception. Will I ever get it? Like to try and maybe try and do that. Sorry to touch your mic. Thank you very much.
No, you don't have, I, nope.
Yeah, what I just want to say is like definitely like everything that I have already have accomplished, it's mutually beneficial, quote, you know, tribe members and members of our community grow and learn so much about, you know, a different culture. And it's something that I don't think most of the country gets to experiences, like intercultural interactions within your own community. I mean, that's just unheard of in the United States. So I think that it's something to move forward that like not just in the school, but maybe outside of the schools. And, you know, looking outside of, you know, the box of like, you know, our monetary restrictions, maybe looking into something that like we can do off school hours or things like that. And to Don, like you were saying, like, right, like, you know, I don't see through the lens of what you guys have gone through, what your, you know, life, your own path has brought and culturally how you came through. So, you know, that's something that hopefully over time we can look into, you know, getting closer to that inside, you know, what does life look like through the lens of a Wampanoag tribe member? Yeah, look forward to that moving forward.
I just want to, you know, echo a lot of what's already been said, but kind of just close with, you know, we've gotten a lot of balls rolling over the last couple of years. As you can see from that document, we've, we've accomplished a lot. And I think now we've got the momentum to kind of pick a new objective and really, like to Talia's point, dig in, like really get in, have whatever conversations we need to have, make the action plans and move forward. And I'm really excited to be a part of that. I am the liaison, just so you all know, for this year, for the tribe, for the school committee. So if you ever have any questions or need anything, you know, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm more than, I grew up in Mashpee, I went through Mashpee Public Schools, so I have my own experiences of what I went, you know, what I was exposed to as a student in school. And I try to be cognizant of that, you know, and bring that to my position here in the school committee as well and, and help where I can. And, you know, that was part of why I wanted to be a part of the school committee is to continue this work that's been started. So, you know, I, I'm very optimistic about where we're heading and I am excited to keep moving forward, but I do think we need to just, you know, take this momentum and like, you know, what Patty said, we lost a little bit of steam, but I think we did get some really good things steps forward. And you can see that in that document, but I do think there's a whole new level now we need to really get at and I'm excited to do that. So thank you everyone for being here and being part of the conversation. It's, it's really just great. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it could be helpful on our side, on behalf of the school committee, to share kind of some of our resources also. All of us as school committee members, our various liaisons, work on some working groups. So to David's point earlier, we actually do have a Plan for Success working group. Where two committee members meet with Patty and Consuelo, our outreach coordinator, to kind of see, you know, where we're at. We're constantly evaluating ourselves. The school committee has goals outside of the superintendent's goals. We kind of have to evaluate ourselves as individual committee members, so on and so forth. Also to your point about getting our younger citizens more engaged in, you know, governmental agencies and services. Kathy and I have taken it upon ourselves to kind of push and use our board here to kind of hold the town to the commitment that we made with the passing of a youth commission that we still don't have. We think that that would be very instrumental for not just the school committee, but the entire, you know, town and municipality. And I think that it just boils down to the fact that the tribe does a lot and as we all know, knowing the history of the town, you know, tribal members help all the elected offices and so on and so forth. So I think that is also a plea to the tribal citizens to get more engaged at the town level, attending town meetings, so on and so forth, outside of Selectman, Councilman Whedon, who is an elected official for the Select Board, which is one of the highest boards in town. I myself am one of the only other tribal members that's an elected official for the town. I'm also the current youngest elected official in the town, holding a seat outside of the tribe. I ran for the seat before running for chairman of the tribe. So that's why I'm sitting on this side today as the secretary. I do believe that it's important to advocate for all Wampanoags and all of our indigenous people, not just, you know, various groups and ethnicities, because we've been here. This has been our homeland for over, you know, thousands of years. So just encouraging our tribal citizens to get more engaged, whether you live in town or you live in other towns, I encourage you to, you know, run for office or, you know, make sure that our voice is heard. And I just want to say, K'Kavatosh, thank you for this opportunity and all the great work that the tribe is doing together.
Thanks, Brian. Carl.
On closing, everybody pretty much touched on all the important issues. From, from a leadership standpoint, just to have this dialogue, good and bad. I've had four children graduate through the school system, born and raised here. Good and bad experiences, but at the end of the day, I've always been able to come and talk to anybody in leadership from the school point, standpoint. So I think just from a tribe's, from a tribe's leadership standpoint of hearing Cameron's point of resources and seeing that we have 158 students, resources is tough for everybody. It's tough for the school. I've been to the town meetings and it's tough for the tribe to find these resources. But I think together, of truly understanding what we need and what you need and that communication, it seems like communication is always the downside of why we're not reaching a point and it's always comes down to communication. So if we stop peeling the onion back and start having the tough conversations, I think it can be accomplished. And I know that from this leadership standpoint, these type of meetings and these type of dialogues with the town and the school are very important and they're imperative. And I know the chairman feels the same way as I do. That's why we're, you know, we're in the town, meeting, meeting the town manager, meeting the town elected officials, voicing our concerns. And I just really feel that living in this community, it, it has a different purpose when we have these type of meetings because it affects all of us. So these type of dialogues, we haven't met in two years. Same thing with the Select Board, we haven't met with them in years. So these type of discussions and meetings need to stay, they need to stay happening from, from both, from both of us. We, we, we all need, we need these to happen and just for the better, betterment of the community as a whole. So I appreciate this time and effort and, and all the work that everybody's doing, quite honestly, from the tribe standpoint, the town standpoint. And I just appreciate the opportunity just to have these tough discussions and they're not always going to be good. They're not always going to be what we want to hear from the tribe standpoint or the town, school committee standpoint. But the fact of the matter is, these are issues that we have to deal with. So again, I, I thank and appreciate the time that everybody's put towards having this meeting and, and towards this partnership and let's continue to work and let's get it done. And Mashpee is going to lead the way for these other municipalities and these other districts on how the tribe is represented. So let's keep up the good work and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carlton. I really appreciate that. And so we have one tradition that we started when we started meeting with the tribal council is we present you guys with a photo of your, the tribal graduates of the classes and we have, we're in arrears, so we've got a couple here. And we do not have this year's, but this is the most recent. This is from 2021 and you'll recognize this handsome guy on the right there. And, and so we'll get you the new one when we, when we have that made, but this is, so we're just going to keep giving you these and I think you should. Yeah, yeah, they're in the council chambers, but I think you should start asking all the districts for pictures of their, of their native graduates so you could have quite the little hallway going over time, right? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh. Oh, yeah, the masks. Yeah, yeah. So I will, so we'll get some photographs after I adjourn the meeting here. Yeah. So I think we dispensed with the agenda. And, no, I don't. I think, I think we took care of the agenda. So, so everyone knows how I like to use my gavel. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, Cameron. Just real quick, we'll make it really fast.